Recording in progress.
All right, if we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order.
Move.
Mm-hmm, me too.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM.
There we go. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bonkriks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kibowadon.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Kruege.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Quorum, present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have on the agenda today is the minute approval of the October 14th, 2025 public hearing and regular meeting.
Court.
Moved and supported. Do we have any further discussion, seeing none is unanimously so ordered? All right. First item we have here is from our friends VFW Post 1888. We have a presentation on some memorial upgrades and improvements, and I'd like, if all of council could join me in welcoming Lynn Bonham, Chairman of the VFW Committee, and John Craven to give the presentation on the VFW Post's upgrades and improvements. If we could get a motion to make this part of the meeting. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? All right. If you guys would like to head on up to the podium, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Rezepa, council members, department heads, and those joining us in the audience tonight. On behalf of the VFW Post 1888, its present and past commanders, officers, general membership, and the men's and women's auxiliary, thank you for the opportunity to present our legacy project that is designed to enhance our city. As chairman, I'd like to briefly introduce our committee members. Each has several generations who have served our country. As I call the names, gentlemen, please stand. Myself, Lynn Bonham, committee chairman, lifelong city resident, U.S. Army, veteran sergeant E-5, 11th Light Infantry Brigade, Forward Field Support Battalion at LZ Bronco Duckfoe, Vietnam, Bronze Star recipient. Next is Ron Booneye, committee vice chairman, U.S. Army, Korea, Hawk Missile Site Chief on the DMZ Post Chaplain for seven years. Frank Brulow, U.S. Navy, Vietnam, Okinawa, Jet Mechanic, Ordnance Specialist, current post senior vice commander. Tom DeMartin, U.S. Marine Corps, Vietnam, Rifleman, Battoon Radio Operator. Jimmy Howard, U.S. Marine Corps, Vietnam, Marine AVH Support Sergeant E-5, two tours in Da Nang, Vietnam, past post commander. Greg Whalen, U.S. Navy, Vietnam, served three years aboard the destroyer USS McKean, DD 784, five-inch, thirty-eight gun mount gun captain, third-class petty officer. Also worth mentioning, he did nine months on the most decorated battleship in history in the Navy. USS New Jersey, nicknamed Black Dragon, fought in four wars, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and Persian Gulf. Okay, last but not least, John Craven, U.S. Army, veteran sergeant, 70th Combat Engineer Battalion, past chairman of DOVE, Dove Fund, Vietnam Veterans Charity, past chairman of our of our Trenton War Memorial at the Veterans Memorial Library, author and Bronze Star recipient. The efforts and passion for this project goes well beyond our committee. I have asked John to present, to make our presentation, and thank you so much. Gentlemen, please be seated.
Will, excuse me, will that show on this screen too? I can read that, I guess, without my glasses. All right. Good evening, everyone. That was my main concern. Thank you for the opportunity, as Chairman Bonham said. Gosh, it doesn't seem possible. Fifteen years ago, I was here to present the original project, which is the library memorial. At the time, it was, let's see, the mayor was past Mayor Jerry Brown. The city clerk was our past mayor, Kyle Stack. Doesn't seem like it's been that long. That was a fantastic project adopted by the city, and we worked hand in hand with the DPS at that time to help us do some paver bricks, minor cement work, and some electrical work on landscaping lights, et cetera. So I'm hoping that this project will be equally exciting, and we can collaborate like we did on the last one. Okay, we already went through the committee. All right. So the top bullet point is kind of hieroglyphic. So there were forty-seven men that served in World War I that were from Trenton back in February 5 of 1931. They were the original forty-seven veterans on the charter that established post 1888 in Trenton. They did not have a building to meet in. They met in the basement of none other than Muleus and Elias for nineteen years, until the current post was built in 1950. So we owe a great debt of gratitude to our current and past commanders, officers, members, and auxiliary for carrying the torch for ninety-four years, serving Trenton and the surrounding communities. Now that we, our post is closed, it will be moving, but what we want to do is, through this project, we want to leave a legacy from the VFW that will add additional historical significance to the city of Trenton. And there's three areas that we chose. The first one is the current memorial home site that was erected in 1950. The second was the World War I monument that is downtown at St. Joseph and West Jefferson, established in 1940, and then the war memorial at the library that was dedicated in 2011. This is, we have a short video and then a few more slides that, if I can get this video to play.
Alone cannot express our gratitude to the brave men and women who took on the task of protecting our country from foreign threats and aggression. President Coolidge once said, "The nation which forgets its defenders will be itself forgotten." Nothing is more important to the soul of America than remembering and honoring those who gave of themselves so that we might enjoy the fruits of peace and liberty. On this day dedicated to American veterans, we honor the brave men and women who have, by their service, preserved our liberty. Our parades are a celebration of freedom. Our banner is "Oh Glory," and we hold her high and proud. This is the legacy of the brave men and women that we honor today. Now let us go forth from here, having learned the lessons of history, confident in the strength of our system, and anxious to pursue every avenue toward peace.
Across generations in battlefields, our veterans have stood as guardians of freedom, dedicating their lives to protect the ideals we hold dear. Brave men and women have stepped forward to protect our freedoms, standing watch against tyranny and injustice. Each veteran carries a story, a story of courage, sacrifice, and unwavering dedication. From the battlefields of World War I, where the trenches echoed with bravery, to the jungles of Vietnam, and the deserts of Iraq and Afghanistan, these heroes have answered the call of duty time and time again. Their sacrifices ensure that we live in a nation defined by liberty and opportunity, but their service doesn't end when they hang up their uniforms. Veterans carry the values of leadership, resilience, and commitment into our communities, inspiring us all to contribute to something greater than ourselves. Many veterans face physical injuries, emotional scars, and a struggle to find their place in a society that sometimes forgets the cost of freedom. Yet even in these challenges, veterans continue to serve, inspiring generations to give back and strive for a better tomorrow. They teach us the values of teamwork and perseverance, showing us that the spirit of service lives on. Every time we honor our veterans through simple acts of gratitude, support, or remembrance, we reaffirm our commitment to their sacrifices. It is a reminder that their bravery paved the way for the freedoms we enjoy today. It is our duty to honor their sacrifices every day. Let us remember the challenges they faced and the sacrifices they made for our freedom. They fought for us. Now it's our turn to fight for them. Welcome to Trenton, Michigan, a city that thrives on community spirit, resilience, and the dedication of its veterans. Here at VFW Post 1888, a powerful legacy has been built, one act of service at a time. VFW Post 1888 isn't just a gathering place, it's a hub of inspiration and action. Established by those who bravely served our country, this post stands as a testament to the values of duty, honor, and service to others. It is about supporting one another and giving back to our community. One of the key ways VFW Post 1888 builds its legacy is through community service. From organizing food drives to volunteering at local shelters, members pour their hearts into supporting those in need. It's rewarding to see the difference the veterans of Post 1888 can make. Post 1888 takes pride in fostering connections with local families. By participating in community events, they strengthen bonds that transcend generations. Every parade, every cookout, every gathering helps weave an unbreakable thread of unity and gratitude. Veterans have had a significant impact on children of Trenton by not only sharing their stories, but also imparting values of respect and service, inspiring youth to understand the importance of giving back. The veterans of Post 1888 demonstrate this commitment to the next generation through mentorship programs, where veterans teach hard work, respect, and leadership. By serving the community, VFW Post 1888 continues to build a lasting legacy. They remind us all that the spirit of service goes beyond the battlefield, enriching lives and creating a stronger, united Trenton. VFW Post 1888 is not just a part of Trenton's history, it's an active force in shaping its future. Together, they've created a legacy of service, compassion, and community that will endure for generations to come. As such, the dedication of military service statues honoring the veterans of VFW Post 1888 in Trenton, Michigan, established in 1931, serves not only as a tribute to the bravery and sacrifice of those who have served our nation, but also as a powerful symbol of the enduring legacy of military and community service. These statues will stand as a constant reminder of the values instilled in our veterans, courage, commitment, and compassion, while also honoring their ongoing contributions to the local community. By commemorating their service in such a visible and lasting way, we inspire future generations to uphold these ideals, ensuring that the spirit of camaraderie, selflessness, and civic duty continues to thrive within the community. Such monuments do more than honor the past. They encourage active engagement and a deeper appreciation for the sacrifices made by veterans, fostering a culture of service and respect that will resonate for ages to come. Let's stand together, honoring their legacy of bravery and selflessness. Let's keep the spirit of freedom alive by ensuring that those who fought for it are never forgotten. Join us in making a commitment to honor our veterans today and every day. Together, we can make a difference.
Okay, that concludes the video. So you've actually seen all the details that I'm going to explain now, but we just have a few more slides. So the first area that we talked about is the current site of the VFW Post and the new site for the firehouse, which the rendering on the right. So there's been discussion already that the city would erect a large flagpole and put a plaque on there indicating that this was the former site of the VFW. We would like to also add a granite, a gray granite bench with the engraving. We're not honoring Madge and Dean Smith, but the engraving is actually on the right side to indicate that that was the former position of the Post 1888. The one decision we made as a committee was anything we bought would be made in the United States. It would be top quality, and it would be zero to minimal maintenance. I'm sure some people in the room are going to appreciate that. So that was, that is our proposal to add a bench and a, probably a spotlight or two for the flagpole and the bench. Moving on to the World War I memorial at St. Joseph and West Jefferson. You've seen the statue. The current, on the left, the current base and that memorial was 1940, so it's, concrete's eighty-six years old. It needs replacement. So we will replace the entire base, and then we will add that World War I life-size bronze statue that will overlook the center of town. That will be a great addition and, I believe, draw a lot of people to town. In addition, when, at the time, the research was done, there are eight names on the plaque. There was one gentleman missed, Frederick S. LeBeau, who is engraved at the library memorial, but we will refurbish that plaque and get the additional name added to that. And then, currently, on the southwest and northeast corners of that intersection, there are modern art pieces there. On the northwest and southeast, we would like to add gray granite benches, as you see here, the same as the others. The northwest corner has the space available if it meets codes, et cetera, and then the southeast also has the space available if that, if that works. And lastly, at our current war memorial in front of the library, I remember that Dedication Day, that it was indicated that was the most people ever that attended a parade in Trenton. We had General Ronald Sams, a 1967 graduate of Trenton High School, three-star retired Air Force general, was the grand marshal, and also spoke to the family members of those sixty-one names engraved on the memorial. It's been fabulous, and we have received compliments throughout the years about that site. These two ladies have loved ones on, that are engraved on those memorials. So we would like to add this bronze plaque also, right underneath the current plaque that says Veterans, Trenton Veterans Memorial Library, honoring all the services, including MIA, missing an Ashen, and POW, prisoner of war, dedicated to all who served. You will never be forgotten. And currently, on the left was on Dedication Day, there's a POW/MIA granite monument there. Today, it's looking a little dull. We will have that refurbished and looking as good as new also. And we're looking at putting three benches in, actually in front of the memorial at the library. Now, I must confess, this, my technical prowess failed me. So I was going to put three benches in this picture, the other two at a thirty-degree angle and make it look great, but I couldn't get it to work right, so I didn't want to look like a third grader put it together. And then, earlier this evening, I realized I'm pretty sure a third grader probably could have gotten it done and done it correctly, so I rest my case. So anyway, we're going to have, we'd like to have three benches there. In addition, the grass would go, and there would be paver bricks, walkway, and maybe two or three permanent flower pots that, similar to the ones that are currently in front of the center stone monument. And then, the two statues you saw earlier in the video, since next year is our 250th anniversary of our country, the Revolutionary Soldier on the left and today's soldier on the right, they will be flanking left and right of the center flagpole at a thirty-degree angle, looking in. Basically, the one saying, wow, look where they are now, and the one saying, wow, look where we came from, and we've got this covered. That is our intention. And that is what you saw earlier. That is what people driving down West Road, walking around the area, or sitting on those three benches would see. Very quickly, summary. So at the firehouse, we have the flagpole and the historical VFW plaque, the granite engraved bench with some spotlights. At the World War I monument, the bronze statue, the refurbishing plaque adding Frederick LeBeau's name on it, spotlights for the statue, and two granite engraved benches. And at the war memorial at the library, three granite benches with pavers, walkway, and flower pots, the stone monument plaque in the center refurbishing the POW/MIA granite monument, and two bronze life-size statues with spotlights. And upon approval, we can begin ordering materials. And we, if we can order materials relatively soon, we expect we may be able to have unveilings by the memorial parade in 2026. So we're looking for your support, obviously, and approval, but in the meantime, are there any questions that anyone has?
Well, first off, Mr. Craven, Mr. Bonham, to everyone on the committee, I just, I've been blown away by this. I think that this has just been such an unbelievably cool idea. I know we talked earlier about wanting to do, you know, some sort of recognition at the building site, but I think, you know, going above and beyond like this to enhance the memorials that we have, to add so many of these important additions, just in so many different parts of town, too, to make sure that that legacy continues on. I'm just so, so excited about it and glad that we're able to just play a small role in helping support the initiative that you all have taken on this. So just personally, I just want to say thank you very, very much to all of you, because this is going to be such an important part of Trenton for a long time to come. So thank you very much for that.
You're very welcome.
But does anyone have questions from council? We'll start with Councilwoman Bonkriks.
Yeah, not really a question, but I want to thank the VFW, number one, for your service. Thank you all. And number two, for, as the mayor said, and I couldn't say it any better, but just for, not just one location, but, you know, spreading, spreading these plaques and, you know, the benches and everything throughout several locations throughout the city and your commitment to the community in the past, as well as, these are things that are going to serve the community in the future as well, and really engrain the VFW Post here in Trenton, you know, for generations to come. So no, thank you very much again for your service and everything that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bonkriks?
Sure.
Oh, sorry. I thought you had your hand earlier. I apologize.
Yeah, I'd like to just echo, first of all, thank you for your service. This, this project was brought to me about a month or so ago, six weeks, by Mr. DeMartin, and I just was blown away at the time, and I thought, this is a no-brainer. I thought this is the most exciting thing. I called our city administrator and everybody. I'm like, look at, you gotta see this project. And it was just, I mean, to buy that corner and to change the look of that corner and what you're going to do for the city with that money that we purchased, so you could do it, but you gave back. And that's what the veterans do all the time. They give back. And that, when you told me what you were going to do with part of that money, I was just so excited. And I want to thank you, and thank you, Tom, for letting me be a part of it all along here, and I was just, I just, you know, and then you said John Craven's involved, and when the Cravens are involved, you, you know, you want to get involved, trust me. And you're just such honorable people, and thank you for enhancing this community, because I just think it's one of the greatest things we've ever done. I loved the war memorial, John, when you did it years ago, but this is so beyond and so fabulous, and to give back like this is, I'm blown away. I mean, I told Dean Preach, I said, this brought tears to my eyes, just listening to Ronald Reagan and the whole video. I thought this is just overwhelming. So thanks again, you guys. This is, this is just terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've actually shared a few tears ourselves amongst the committee now and then.
No doubt about it. Yep, thank you.
Right. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I would just like to say thank you all so much for your service, and I just think this presentation was just absolutely remarkable. Thank you so much. It's definitely going to be a treasure for our future here in Trenton. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Anyone from, else from council have anything? Cool. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Craven. Appreciate it.
If there's any further questions, we will respectfully excuse ourselves from your regular business.
That would be...
And thank you so much for getting on board.
We appreciate you all immensely. We'll be, not to get ahead of ourselves formally voting on this in a little bit, but I think, I mean, it should be pretty obvious, right? I can't make any promises here, but again, thank you guys for doing all this. This is phenomenal, and we look forward to doing whatever we can to be a part of it, too. So, thank you.
It's our pleasure. We're honored, and thank you again for having us tonight. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Next item ahead here on the agenda was proclamation for National American Indian Heritage Month from the Daughters of the American Revolution here. Proclamation here, well, actually, I'll ask to make this part of the regular minutes first.
So moved.
Court moved and supported. I'll read it into the record now here. I'm sorry, I got jumbled up there. "Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, whereas the contribution of American Indians have enhanced freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, whereas Native American Awareness Week..." whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designated in the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Stephen Rosepas, Mayor of the City of Trenton, do proclaim the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Trenton and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to public comment regarding items on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for all of their public comment a little bit later in the meeting here. To ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Direct all questions through me, and please limit their comments to five minutes. We'll keep on moving. Next up, under appointments, uh, I'm asking for this body's approval, um, of my appointment of Mark Angelotti to the Planning Commission and reappointment of Jeff Wager to the Historical Commission for terms expiring November 1st, 2028.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Uh, we'll have you do a roll call, Madam Clerk, if there's any further discussion. Mind calling the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Kev Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruggi?
Abstain.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rosepa?
Abstain.
Von Crooks?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rosepa.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, uh, under authorities, commissions, boards, and committees, uh, from Janice Ritchie, a resignation from the Civic Commission. If we can receive and place this on file and, uh, send a letter of appreciation for her service.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, under general, we have the Downriver Community Conference Annual Membership Dues along with the Downriver Mutual Aid. Asking for this body's approv, uh, motion to approve the payment of $7,684.36 to the Downriver Community Conference with funding from the miscellaneous account, and a payment of $21,594.27 to Downriver Mutual Aid with funding from the miscellaneous account for the annual membership dues.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Um, next up, I will defer to our 33rd District Court delegate, Councilman Benedetti, for our fines, costs, and fees for September 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive and place on file the fines, costs, fees, September 2025 submitted by the 33rd District Court showing the City of Trenton receiving $5,322.10.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Councilman. Groups and organizations, uh, Madam Clerk, I'll have you take this one if you don't mind, from the Trenton Lions Club, sign and logo removal.
Thank you. The Trenton Lions Club disbanded as of February of 2025, and they submitted a letter, um, that you have in front of you requesting the city to remove all signs and logos existing within the City of Trenton.
So moved.
Support.
I moved and supported to approve that request. Councilman Kevowen?
Yeah, just, uh, under, well, a little related to that. Um, so they have a park named after them. It's no longer gonna be, are we calling it just, do we have a second name for the park, or what do we call it? Used to be? I don't know.
I think that'll, uh, that'll stick as Lions Park, um, just give it a broader legacy and things like that too. But I think it's just the.
Sponsor opportunity or something like that?
The specific local Lions Club, but then like the Welcome to Trenton signs, that's what's gonna be removed.
Okay.
That's supposed to be, yep. Councilwoman Buncker?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Lions Club personally. They've been around Trenton a long, long time, and I think they're kind of disbanding with, for lack of membership probably, and, uh, a lot of the older gentlemen have passed away that, they just, you know, they were really an important part of one of our service groups here, and I'd just like to let them know and thank them for all their years of service to our community.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. We'll, uh, go over to our city administrator, Mr. Creach, for the next few items here. First up being the VFW Post 1888 Memorial Upgrades and Improvements.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You guys have seen the presentation by the veterans. What we, what we are planning on doing is helping with, uh, the lighting at the World War I memorial. We'll also, uh, gonna add two of the benches, um, uh, part, part of the project, and any, uh, any other infrastructure stuff we need, like pouring the pads. And we're also gonna take care of extending at the library the, uh, paver area so that it'll not just be planted in the middle of grass. So looking for a motion to approve the proposed VFW memorial project as presented and direct the city administrator to execute the necessary contracts and purchases in support of the project in amount not to exceed $35,000.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. Next up, the liability and insurance renewal with the Michigan Municipal League.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have our annual renewal proposal from MML, we've had them for the last couple of years, a little jump in our premiums, um, from, uh, $319,000 to $350,000. But it's, uh, really falls in line with the increase in payroll is a good part of it, and we've added, um, eight vehicles to our fleet, and none of them were cheap for sure. So looking to get your approval to approve the liability and property pool renewal proposal as presented with MML in the amount of $350,109.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Now we've got the Veterans Memorial Library Entrance Upgrade.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, uh, this is part of our, our bond project, and this'll take care of the front entrance and the facade over at the library, which is in severe need of reconstruction and, uh, um, being rebuilt and cleaned up and everything. So we had a bid opening, and, uh, this was the low bidder, and the references came back just fine. They'll be, of course, subject to the same insurance and bonding requirements as any other project. So I'm looking for you to approve the quote from North American Construction Enterprises for the Veterans Memorial Library Entrance Upgrades in the amount of $235,000 with a 10% contingency.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Um, and then lastly, for you here, Dean, we've got the elevator modernization at City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, elevator at City Hall is also one of the bond projects. We've had several, uh, companies out to give estimates, and we've been a little bogged down, um, making sure that we had all the right current safety components added to the project. And in the end, the quote from TKE, um, in the amount of $171,983.82 with a 10% contingency is requested. I should note that this is not a complete removal and replacement. This is a rebuild, a complete replacement. It's not necessary. Um, it would be upwards of a million dollars. So, uh, this is a complete, you'll, you'll never know the difference. When you step in it, it'll operate properly. Everything will be all updated. It's just the basic structure of the elevator tower stays in place. So asking to approve the quote from TKE for the City Hall elevator modernization in the amount of $171,983.82 with 10% contingency.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean. All right, next up, we have from our DDA Director, Ms. Pusino, Noel Nights coming up in December here.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the Trent DDA is looking to get their special events application and budget approved for the Noel Nights for $10,000. The special events application has been attached, but I'll just briefly go, uh, through it. Uh, the Noel Nights will be from December 6th, 13th, and 20th, ranging from times from 2:00 to 5:30, 12th, and 12:00 to 4:00. It will occur, um, along downtown Trenton. Uh, we're not requesting any major road closures, but we are asking to use some of the city properties such as Alum Street and this, uh, Trenton City Hall for registrations and a holiday market. Just to kind of go through what the events will be having, so for the 6th, this will be kind of in tie with the, uh, Christmas Parade. Uh, we're gonna be doing a little trivia hunt, so businesses will have little hunts, um, quizzes basically of holidays, and, um, people can, uh, win little prizes in basically gear for the parade. We'll also have food samples from local businesses, so be perfect for people to head down early, grab some cool holiday gear and some food. Um, we will be charging you to register, and it'll just be, um, $5 per person and then just $10 for the entire family. For the 13th, we're gonna be doing a hot cocoa walk. Then we'll have little hot cocoa stations at different businesses. And then we'll have a little snowflakes, snowflake scavenger hunt, and then a little mini concert held here at the Trent City Hall from local communities. This will also be registered, but it will just be $5 per person, and kids are free. Um, and then lastly, we'll be ending it on December 20th. Um, we'll be having a holiday market here at the Trent City Hall as well as pony rides right outside, um, and Santa, and photos with Santa and kids' crafts. So, um, again, we're kind of under the, um, Trent City Insurance, so we're all good, and the pony rides and the little nativities we'll have has, is covered insurance and has been used before. I attached also a little rough budget. This has been approved by the Trent DDA Board. For the rough $10,000, we'll be well and under the budget. So I'm just asking for the approval of the special events application for the Noel's Night and the $10,000 budget.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. Be great. All right, next up, from our Human Resources Director, Ms. Perry, uh, first of a couple of items. Um, we've got the CBA between the city and the Trent Inspectors and Lieutenants Association.
Correct. Good evening. So tonight is the extension with the city and TILA, and this would extend the current collective bargaining agreement, which was set to expire at June 30th, 2026. This would now, with this extension, it would be in place till June 30th, 2028. This includes updates to wages and fringe benefits, and it also provides for a contract reopener after January 1st for non-economic items. So I'm seeking your approval for this extension and to authorize signatures.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Uh, next, we've got the same CBA extension with the Trent Police Officers Association.
This is, this is with the actual officers association, and similar to the TILA, it also extends their collective bargaining agreement through June 30th of 2028, includes updates to wages and fringe benefits, and provides for a contract reopener for non-economic items after January 1st. And I would seek your approval for the extension and to authorize signatures.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next, we have the CBA extension between the city and the Trent Firefighters Local 2701.
Yep, and so this too is a contract extension with the Trenton Firefighters Association. This agreement also extends their current collective bargaining agreement, which was scheduled to expire at the end of June of 2026. It would be extended through June 30th of 2028. It also includes updates to wages and fringe benefits, and provides for a contract reopener after January 1st to draw, to address non-economic issues. Again, seeking your approval for the extension and to authorize signatures.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Uh, next, CBA extension between the city and the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan.
Thank you. And to sound like a broken record, this is another contract extension. This is between the TP OEM, which represents the employees of the Department of Public Service, the clerical, as well as those that are employed at the wastewater treatment plant. Their contract was set to expire on June 30th of 2026. This extension would get them through June 30th of 2028. Includes updates to their wages and fringe benefits, also provides for a contract reopener for non-economic items after January 1st. Seeking your approval for this extension and to authorize signatures.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. I thank you all. Now we'll change it up to something slightly different from Elizabeth here. We have the Resolution to Adopt the Annual Exemption Option as set forth in PA 152 of 2011, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Thank you. So I'm seeking your approval to adopt this attached resolution, which you did last year, and kind of piggybacks on, in regards to the extensions that were just passed. And this would allow us to negotiate with the employees with regards to their healthcare premiums, and that would be for January 1st of 2026. So, um, I would ask for you to move for the resolution, and a roll call vote is actually required for this one.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? You're fine, yeah. Any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Kev Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruggi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rosepa?
Yes.
Von Crooks?
Yes.
Benedetti?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rosepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all. Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, next, we have the Extension of Economic Infringe Benefits to Non-Union Personnel.
Thank you. So I'm asking for consideration to formally extend the collective bargaining agreements to, the benefits to the non-union employees who are not represented by those, and this would promote, um, some sort of equality and consistency among all employees with regards to wages and benefits. And so I would just move for you to extend these economic infringed benefits from the extended collective bargaining agreement between the TP OEM and the City of Trenton to eligible non-union employees.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Lastly, for you here, the Ardellis Insurance Access Loss Insurance Contract.
Thank you. So my last, seventh and last item is simply a contract, a renewal of our stop loss. So the city is self-insured for medical and prescription drug. Their Ardellis contract protects the city for any claims that exceed $100,000. It has gone up. As is everything in the world of insurance, um, we have budgeted accordingly, and so I'm seeking for your approval of this contract and to authorize for signatures.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much.
All right, next we have, uh, Ms. Jensen from the library here, um, with the security camera installation at the library.
Thank you. Um, so first, I want to just thank you all for approving the exterior improvements of the library earlier in the meeting. This, um, bringing to you today the, some inside work. Uh, we're gonna be adding some, uh, security cameras that will be directly linked to the police department. And, uh, this, uh, quote is from Tarek Nahas, who is a, um, with the company that has been servicing the cameras that are there at this time. And the library board has been informed of the change, and they agree to the increase. The summary is of an installation of three, um, cameras, three more cameras inside and three outside cameras, and one at the entry of the library, uh, bringing the total of cameras on the site to 14. And then, of course, the server and migrating existing cameras onto the new server. So we are asking for, uh, the, um, for the board to approve the cost to not exceed $23,837.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Beaker, Parks and Recer, Recreation Director here, um, the fencing project at the Kennedy Recreation Center.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm requesting approval to purchase and install new fencing at the Kennedy Recreation slash Aquatic Center. Proposed fencing will separate the pool area from the rink parking lot located on the southwest end of the facility. In addition, the new fencing will allow for expanded tented areas shade, uh, to be used during the summer months, providing additional shade and party spaces for guests. We received three quotes for the project from Cornerstone Fence, Weber Vinyl Fence Company, and Custom Wood and Vinyl Fencing. Cornerstone Fence submitted the lowest qualified bid in the amount of $14,708. I respectfully request your authorization to enter into an agreement with Cornerstone Fence. To complete the project at, as quoted, funds for the improvement are available in the Building Improvement Fund.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, Chief Hawkins, this is two items for us this evening. First up being the Tyler Technology Cloud LE Software Renewal.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you is the request for a renewal for Tyler Technology Cloud software. This is the yearly renewal cost for the law enforcement software suite through Tyler Technology. This includes records management corrections, dispatching software, and report writing software. Trenton's share of the total bill is broken down to be 7.49% of the SINK communities, which has Trenton owing $29,560.51. This item was budgeted for, and there was no increase from the previous year. and there was no increase from the previous year out of the Computer Equipment Software Maintenance Fund. I'm requesting approval of the Tyler Technology invoice for twenty-nine thousand five hundred sixty dollars and fifty-one cents.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next, we have the change of the Traffic Control Order twenty-twenty-five dash zero one from temporary to permanent.
Uh, Traffic Sergeant Benars, after consultation with the Traffic Safety Commission, is requesting that Traffic Control Order twenty-five dash oh one be changed from temporary to ninety-day order, uh, temporary ninety-day order to a permanent order. This order is a no-turn-on-red sign at Weston Manning. It was monitored for ninety days. No citations are issued at that time, but their determination was that it is a safety issue and should be permanent. So I'm requesting the approved Traffic Control Order twenty-five oh one changed from temporary to permanent status.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Chief. Alright, we've got two late items tonight. Uh, first up here from our city administrator, the contract for a temporary parking lot for resident access at City Hall and hydrant installation near fire system connection.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I apologize for a late item, but, uh, the, uh, contract, or the concrete pouring season is closing up fast. So this is a, a, a decision that was made to add a curb cut and parking on the east and west side of Third Street in front of City Hall, because if you go out parallel from the building, that's all gonna be closed off to construction. Um, we're also gonna add parking just past the circular drive that's gonna, um, locate the, uh, handicap parking. Um, most of that will also be able to be incorporated into the overall flow and plan of what we're gonna have here at City Hall when the police station is completed. Um, the other, the other request in this is for thirty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for a fire hydrant that'll be near the police station. Um, and the great thing is that Campo Brothers is gonna be here doing the undercutting, which you, you guys, uh, signed off on last month. Um, so, asking for your support and authorization to execute a contract, an, an additional contract with Campo Brothers in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand eleven dollars to take care of the temporary parking and handicap access and the, uh, hydrant installation that was added to the police station project.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean. Um, then from our city controller, Ms. Cooper, we have our inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Kennedy Recreation Fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, good evening. Um, I also apologize for my late item. I had a, a audit wrap-up meeting with Plant Moran at two o'clock this afternoon, and, um, going over some things they had brought to my attention, the need for an inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Kennedy Recreation Fund, um, in the amount of forty thousand thirty-two dollars. Um, so while the Recreation Fund ended the year with a positive, um, overall net position, much of the balance represented, um, it was in capital assets, um, rather than liquid assets. So, um, while the capital assets are an important part of the business, um, it wasn't enough to meet the short-term liabilities that we had at year-end with some of the, um, accounts payable and other obligations. Um, so at, as of June thirtieth, um, the Recreation Fund's unrestricted net position is negative, and the current assets, um, are forty thousand thirty-two dollars less than the current liabilities. Um, so I'm just looking for a motion to approve the inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Rink Fund in the amount of forty thousand.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, I will now defer to our Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Benedetti for our disbursements and statements, and then our reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the authorized disbursements November third, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of four million ninety-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you, Mayor. Received and placed on file the Historical Commission Minutes September eighth, twenty twenty-five, the Recreation Committee Minutes, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, Retiree Healthcare Benefit Plan Board Minutes, July sixteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Alright, thank you very much, Councilman.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now go to, uh, other council business tonight. Um, the only thing I've got is just to wish everyone luck, and, uh, to remind everyone to go vote tomorrow. Uh, polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM around town. Um, so make sure you go do that. Um, we'll start this evening with Councilwoman Bonk Crooks.
Oh geez, thank you. Um, yeah, I got to thinking about something over the last couple of weeks, and we haven't met, and, uh, with what's going on with the federal government and, uh, the funding for our local Michigan and local families in the state and our cities. I just, um, got to thinking, you know, to each our own, and, uh, I was sitting here thinking about our Trenton Food Pantry, and all the residents in Trenton who might have, you know, food insecurities or whatever, and, uh, you know, need help at this time. And so I was thinking about, uh, making a plea to all our residents and the business owners to, until things are settled and things start coming in better, to try to support our Trenton Food Pantry, and see that we give donations monetarily, food, non-perishables, whatever, so we can help feed our own Trenton families. I'm kinda worried about it, and, uh, I don't want our Trenton residents to worry about it. So if we can really try to get down there, it's at, uh, Saint Phillips Lutheran Church, takes in the donations, and they're open from, on Wednesdays, from eleven to one or two, I think it's eleven to one, eleven to two, something like that. But I think we need to get down there and just support our own families, and make sure that nobody in Trenton goes without. I know the kids are fed at school, you know, but there's the nights and the weekends and the adults and people who need stuff too, so, um, I just encourage everybody to, let's take care of our own. So, that's about it. Remember to vote tomorrow. A great city, a great town. We wanna keep it that way, and, uh, we'll see everybody next week. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have to agree with Councilmember Bonk Crooks about the food pantries. We need to make sure that we take care of those things. I know in the past, um, Debbie, you've, um, let us know what days the collections are for Goodfellows and everything else, and I hope this year people step up and help with those things. And I know the scouts, I see Howard in the audience, they always do their part. Uh, he might be here for that. Today, I see him dressed for that, so. Um, just to remind people, yeah, it is a time of need for some people. Um, we've been blessed here, I've been blessed here, working here and then now sitting here, and, uh, I think it's a great thing for us to do. Um, a couple of things. I wanna thank, uh, Administrator Creach and Ms. Perry and the employees, I see some of them here. Department hedging, take it back to your people. But I think it was a great idea to do this this year. Um, in my whole time as an employee here, we never negotiated early, and I think there's times we should've, so I like the, uh, get out there and get it done attitude, and I know there's reasons for it this year. And I'm glad that you're taking the steps to help the retirees and the current employees so we can keep them here, and keep them working, and keep their benefits where they can be able to support themselves and their family. Um, so I appreciate that, and thank you very much to you two and the union executive boards. I know they are fun to deal with sometimes, but I think we got a good relationship right now. Um, and also, just remind people to vote tomorrow. Um, it's gonna be a little nice out, so get out and do it. If you haven't already absentee valid, um, if you got an absentee ballot, I know Debbie will remind you, but you can still bring it tomorrow if you haven't turned it in, right?
Right.
So we wanna make, uh, people aware of that, and I hope to see some of you people out there tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Hornbeck.
Alright, I got a couple of things here. Uh, first, I wanted to say congratulations to Jamie Glatt Felter, who is from Trenton High School. She is a sophomore, and she ran at the Cross Country State Meet, where she earned a personal record, and said she had a really good time too, and I asked her about it. So congratulations to her for getting to participate in that, and good luck to Trenton Football, who won their first playoff game on Saturday, and will be playing again this coming Friday, uh, at MLK High School. So good luck to them. Um, and a congratulations to our own city clerk for her Sunlight Award from the Michigan Fair Elections Institute, uh, for always running the best elections. And, um, we appreciate her every day, but especially this time of year. So, which goes with the, um, reminding everyone to get out and vote, and good luck to our candidates tomorrow. And also, I'm really looking forward to those Noel nights. That, that sounds really fun, and I'm sure my kids will have a blast at those. That's all I've got.
Alright, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Peruggi.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just like to repeat basically what, uh, Timber and Rick have said about, um, food pantries. I think that's important. It's really, besides this time of year, I think it should be noted all year round. Um, it, uh, it's just really super important, and coming from a, a humble beginning i- in my life, I understand the value to it. So I appreciate those who generously contribute. And also, um, I wish the candidates luck tomorrow, and, uh, make sure you go out and vote. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Cabo Watten.
Yeah, Mayor, same, same, same things, maybe a couple of different twists, but, uh, but yeah, you know, um, it, it's that time of year, and I can't believe we're already at, uh, in November, and we'll, pretty soon we'll be in January. I hate to say it, but it's the reality. Um, but it is a time that, uh, people kind of, uh, you know, go out of their way to, to take care of others, take care of your neighbors, look out for people. Um, you know, um, take some time if you can to volunteer. I know, um, I do get the opportunity this time of year to volunteer, um, through my employer and, uh, and hand out turkeys, um, which is, is very, very, um, fulfilling. It's, it's nice to help people that, uh, maybe need a little bit of help, so. Um, you know, just keep those folks in mind, um, this time of year, and, and throughout the year as well. Um, congratulations to Trenton Football on their victory. Look forward to seeing, um, some more victories here, uh, in the coming weeks here as they progress through the, uh, the next rounds. Um, I wanna thank the, the members of the VFW again. Um, what an awesome, awesome contribution that they made here today. And, and I'm so glad we're able to support them, and they will be, uh, memorialized here for, for years to come. Um, Dean, I wanna thank, you know, Mayor, I wanna thank you, Dean, all the department heads for all the hard work you've done with, um, with the contracts, and just the, the day-in, day-out work that, uh, y'all do to make this community great. We really don't realize, I think, sometimes, um, or maybe take it for granted, um, what a great community we live in, we live in. And so, thank you to, uh, all the hard work, uh, you each put in every single day. Um, Debbie, good luck tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, and your team, 'cause I know it's gonna be a heck of a long day for you, but it's, uh, you make democracy run, so thank you very much. And, uh, I think that's, uh, I think I've covered the gamut here today, Mayor. I think I'm all set now.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm not sure I wanna repeat everything. I agree with what everyone said. Thank you so much, because that saves, you know, less talking for me, I guess. I just would like to say that I'm, I'm very proud, Debbie, of you and your team and all your volunteers. Everyone, please come out and vote tomorrow. I also would like to say thank you, Elizabeth, Dean, Mayor, everyone on these contracts. I'm so proud of the work that we've done over the last, which you really do show the example that is set, that we can still stay within our budget and still take care of our city employees and their families, because they take care of us every day. Thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Cool. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Alright, we'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything, uh, of note?
I'll just, I'll just repeat. Tomorrow is Election Day. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. We've received a lot of phone calls regarding the Westfield Center, because everybody knows the Westfield Center is under construction. Um, thank you, Dean. Thank you, Tim. Tim Baker is just always incredible, and always, always, always working so hard and, and so helpful. Um, that Westfield Center is under construction. Saying that is saying it very lightly. It is like a shell. So, um, it's gonna be a little dirty, but we cleaned it up pretty good today, and, um, so the, the precinct will still be at the Westfield Center. We will be all in the fireplace room tomorrow for voting. Um, but yeah, it's exciting to have the building kind of, you know, tore up right now, because we're super excited to see what it's going to look like, hopefully, like in January. Um, but so the precincts will still be open at the Westfield Center, and also here at City Hall, and, um, just good luck to everybody. Our next regular council meeting will be on November twenty-fourth, so we'll be three weeks away for the next council meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Madam Assessor, do you have anything tonight? Nothing. Mr. Treasurer, do we, there's Mike. Got anything for us tonight, Mr. Treasurer?
I was told to keep it short, and I'm going to. Just remember, Bougie Two is coming up February twelfth. And, oh, by the way, there is a bin out there for peanut butter and cereal that Rotary is collecting for the food pantry, so you can bring that in when you vote tomorrow.
Awesome. Just in case anyone couldn't hear that there, um, maybe at home, um, uh, collection box in City Hall that there is, uh, for peanut butter, cereal, uh, things like that, uh, that Rotary is collecting for. So if you have any of those items you'd like to drop off when voting tomorrow, uh, that would go to great use. Uh, any of our department heads have anything, uh, here? Alright, uh, we'll go to Dean first here, and then go to Tim, so.
Good. Just real quick, Harrison at the RotoTrax is open as of about six PM this evening, finally after seventeen weeks.
Yes!
Wow.
Not a city project, but it's open nonetheless. And then Harrison Bridge is completely closed, um, over the Frank and Poet, and it'll be that way for the next couple of weeks. We tried to keep, uh, one lane open going, uh, one direction, but it really, we tried it, and it just, it wasn't safe, um, for anybody. So that's completely closed, but, uh, that should wrap up in, uh, two or three weeks.
We must've willed that one into, uh, reality there, on the Harrison Tracks, so, oh, great news. It's only four times as long as we expected, so. Alright, Tim, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, um, as of the conversation earlier about the Lions Club, I wanted to say thank you to the Lions Club for all, the great partnership they've had with Parks and Recreation for years and years in the city, um, and everything they've helped us accomplish. So it's a, it's sad to see them, uh, decommissioning the, the local organization, civic organization, but, uh, we have greatly appreciated all their work, and want a special thank you to them, so.
Yes, thank you for that, Tim. Definitely appreciate that. Alright, Chief Hawkins?
Uh, thank you. I was gonna mention the, uh, Harrison closure. There is access for emergency vehicles there, but the road is closed, so there will be officers in the area at the Frank and Poet. Um, uh, residents can always download the Trenton Police Mobile app for updates on any of these road closures. Uh, more importantly, what I'm up here for is just to, to give a, a couple thank yous. Uh, many of you saw downriver the American House fire in Southgate, and, and it's a great example of mutual aid, and today you approved the contracts to continue with DCC mutual aid, and just how important that is. It's one of the longest-standing, uh, mutual aid agreements in the state of Michigan. Um, and I wanna thank our officers, Jonathan Lippa and Erica Dubkey, who responded to that. And if you didn't get a chance, I would encourage you to go online. Southgate, uh, posted some phenomenal footage, and I think some of our officers are in there as well, um, showing what they did, uh, with their body cams, running into the building, and, and not just our officers, but the fire, firefighters as well, uh, carrying these people down the stairs, carrying wheelchairs. So, uh, just a thank you to our officers and all the first responders that were there. Um, it, it's a good feeling to know, even in a tragic event, that there are so many people coming to help, uh, and that we have a great relationship. So, uh, a thank you to Officer Lippa and Officer Dubkey from our department. Uh, I wanted to congratulate Lieutenant Scott Stadler and Lieutenant Greg Brewster, who couldn't be here tonight, but I want to recognize them at an upcoming meeting. They both graduated from Eastern Michigan University Staff in Command for Executive Leadership. Uh, Lieutenant Stadler's, uh, research paper was on creating a citizens' police academy for the Trenton Police Department, which we hope will be in time with the new building. It'll be a great, uh, thing for the community. And Lieutenant, uh, Greg Brewster, his research was on the correct duty holster for Trenton Police Department Patrol, uh, and he actually won a research award for that, so, uh, we're gonna meet with him and maybe implement his findings. Uh, it's a ten-week program that emphasizes leadership, and it was great to have two of our officers, uh, graduate just a couple of weeks ago. And just, just, uh, next meeting, hoping to swear in two new employees who are graduating And just, just next meeting, hoping to swear in two new employees who are graduating from the police academy in a week and a half. It'll be Officer Colin Slater and Officer Mason Walls. They have a week and a half left, but hopefully we'll see them here at the next meeting on the 24th. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. All right. Any other department heads? I don't think so. Nope. All right, we'll go to public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address. Direct all questions through me and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Christina McNally Stewart. I own Freckles and Grit at 2723 West Jefferson here in downtown Trenton. I'm here to speak to you all this evening about the ongoing road closure issues that we've had for events in downtown Trenton. Just to give you a little bit of background, I know this has gone on for years, long before I've gotten here and my business has gotten here. There's been two recent events where road closures were approved, the event applications were approved, and because of the complaints of one particular business owner, plans were changed days before the event, causing the event planners to almost cancel the event, incurring additional costs to pull off the road closure within the new time that we were given days before the event. It also happened most recently as lobster palooza that we had a couple of weeks ago, when one end of the alley, that ends that goes between West Road and St. Joseph was closed at one end. Said business owner came out in their normal screaming and yelling unprofessional fashion. Police were called and the city did reopen that end of the alley, even though the event was approved for that closure. The reason why this is so important, and I think that the council needs to understand, is these events that we hold in downtown Trenton that private people own, that the DDA is putting on, that business owners put on, are so important for downtown businesses. We do have the Trenton Street Fair. I will tell you personally, as a business owner, the Trenton Street Fair does not bring business to my front door. It usually costs more money. The five-hour witches' night out event that we had last weekend put on by the Vintage Market brought more revenue to my business in five hours than 20 hours of the Trenton Street Fair does. I just need you guys to understand that we need your support, the downtown businesses do. In the past couple of years, we've had two of our flagship businesses close for the first time in a very long time. We have empty businesses in our downtown. We're having a hard time finding businesses that are interested to come downtown due to our lack of events and foot traffic. I just need you guys all to understand how important that is, and I hope that the road closure issue can finally get a policy in place that is followed. We've had policies in place before and they really haven't been followed or upheld. Multiple downtowns around us in different cities, Allen Park, Wyandotte, Monroe, any active downtown area closes their major roadways multiple times a month, multiple times a year, and hold large-scale events that benefit their downtown businesses. This is not an uncommon thing. This is a very common thing. And I just hope that you will take into consideration allowing more road closures, not tying the DDA committees, event committees' hands for events, doing, making the process easier for event planning companies to come to Trenton to plan events, i.e. the Vintage Market, who no longer has any events planned in the city for the following year. I just hope that we understand that doing things the same way that we've always done them, we're always going to get the same result and we're never going to get any better than what we, than what we are right now. I hope that everyone just takes some time to see what other cities are doing around us, and I believe that we can be better if we're allowed to be better. And I just hope that you support our downtown businesses and allow us to hold more events that include road closures for large-scale events to bring more people to our downtown, to solicit our downtown businesses, or we're not going to have any businesses downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christina. Just piggybacking off that a little bit, you know, I just want to say, well, first off, I guess, you know, not speaking for everyone, but I will. But, you know, thank you for, you know, everything that you've done and all the others that have volunteered. I mean, everyone can see the amount of effort and the outcome that goes into that, too. There's been more the last few years because of the things that the business owners and volunteers have put together downtown than there have been in such a long time, right? And there's definitely things on our end administratively we are absolutely going to continue to work through, because we know, right, if we want this to succeed, it has to be that bustling, vibrant area that we know it can be. And in particular, right, that foot traffic is what supports small businesses. We have always kind of steered away from having like the big box chain store type of things, too, but the way that we're able to support small businesses is by having the walkable areas and things like that, too. So it's certainly a learning process for all of us. And I just want to say that you have our commitment to doing whatever we can to help continue to solve these problems. I'm sure that there's going to be new ones that arise at some point, too, but at the end of the day, it's good problems to have when we want people to come here and things like that. So we'll just, yeah, we'll keep doing what we can. I promise. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Davidson. I own Elliot's Bakery and Coffee Shop in downtown Trenton, 2636 West Jefferson. And I would just also ask that the council and the mayor continue to support the downtown activities that we have. As a small business, we depend on foot traffic. We depend on the special events that take place down there to bring customers into the bakery, and so I would appreciate your support as well.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I would like to request a study session to look at our downtown events policy, if we could do that.
Sure. Let's see. Are you thinking?
Maybe the, not the week of Thanksgiving, but the following meeting?
Yeah, let's see here. The F?
Like before?
Before?
Yeah.
Prior to the council meeting? So, okay, Monday would be December 1st? Does that, schedule-wise, 6:00 p.m.?
Six o'clock.
Well, I would ask, would it also work for you all, so you could be in attendance? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So does that, 6:00 p.m. before that? Okay, we can tentatively plan for that. So, Councilwoman, if you want to make a motion to hold a study session 6:00 p.m. December 1st for the purpose of discussing special events policy?
Okay, so, yeah, like to make a motion to?
You don't have to repeat it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah. Moved and supported, okay. Any further discussion? We've got to schedule a study session 6:00 p.m. Monday, December 1st, for the purpose of discussing the special events policy. Any further discussion? Seeing now it's unanimously so ordered. Shot that down, so don't forget. All right, just one second. All right.
Add to calendar.
Yeah, I'll put it in my other one after. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Do we have any? Oh, there we go.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Soraki. I own a few restaurants in town, Toronto, right on the corner here, and a couple of others. I just want to say, you know, I've never really sat through a whole commission meeting and watched what everybody does here, but I usually come for what I kind of need and then I kind of split. But just watching the whole process, I got to say you guys work hard, so I just want to say that first. Second is, yeah, I mean, bottom line is, is these events are important for us. I specifically know Lobstover Festival, I could tell you that when we had it going down the middle of the street, it generated, you know, about $40,000 to $50,000 worth of extra revenue compared to this year. We had great sunshine, we had a great event, but we couldn't sell things on the street side. There weren't people walking around. I think that there was a lot of families that came down for the art festival and the lobster festival, and they got here and they were like, so what do we do? Right? Like, I think there was a lot of things missing. And I think that we can only do so much, right? We only have so much, so many dollars and so much opportunity, and it's a lot of work for us. And we really need your support in trying to come up with new things, like some kids rides, like some things for people to do once they get here. I know there was a lot of art stuff going on and that was great. People could go around and watch that, but it wasn't really stuff to do. Like, there wasn't fun stuff for kids. And I think that's where, you know, the kids are the drivers in all of this. I think the kids bring the families more than the families bring the kids, right? So I think we definitely need more events downtown. And I, and I, and I, I'm neighbors with the sourpuss, excuse my language, but I'm neighbors with the fellows that are the people that complain about the events. And they have their own parking lots. I was the one who had to move my barricades and give up half the street. We had a lot of things planned, but we moved them, okay, because I don't want to cause any trouble and I can move them. So we moved them and it's not a big deal, but it kind of is. I think we need support that when we have events downtown, that we can have them. Like, we shouldn't have, you know, one business shouldn't ruin it for the entire street. I think, I see the little businesses like Freckles and Grit, that, you know, that probably brings a lot of revenue that they normally don't get. I know they don't get a lot of street walking during the day, during the week. They probably get a lot of weekend activity, but these events probably bring them to the black, right, out of the red. So I know that it helps me. So that being said, I think, you know, the Jazz Festival is another opportunity. When I was, had a restaurant in Monroe, the city put jazz musicians in each business, in the restaurants, and they supported that and they paid for that and whatever that cost them, but it brought people into the town. Because when the Jazz Festival happens, people roll in and they roll out. We don't see them. So 4th of July fireworks, we don't see them. They come in, they use the bathroom, they leave. So there's things that we can do, I think, to draw customers into the places. I'm sure that Freckles and Grit and any other business would love to have a jazz musician in there. And it'll bring people around and it'll create a whole experience over just people coming and visiting the Jazz Festival and leaving. I don't want to dig, but I've never, I just got approached by the, I'm reopening a restaurant in Brownstown, and they called me and said, hey, we'd love to do a ribbon cutting. I've opened four restaurants in Trenton. Never once has anybody called me for a ribbon cutting. Wyandotte did, never in Trenton. Not gross deal either, but I'm not digging on anybody. I love this town, obviously. I keep building restaurants here. I try to be part of the community. I do as much as I can to give back, but we do need your support. We need your help. This is a dead-end road. It ends here, okay? When the barricades leave and we cut through the city, it affects business. Like, it, the way the business routes around, it helps, right? So there's things that are important to us. It helps our community. It helps the people that are supporting this. And the last time I was here, I was really proud and I said how many businesses have been filled up since I came to town. Like, every business was full. Now we've got a coffee shop that went out of business. We've got another shop that left. We've got a few empty stores now, and I think that we're going in the wrong direction. I think with your help, all these stores can be full and we could be a destination. Nobody's got Elizabeth Park. It's owned by Wayne County, I understand, but it's our park, right? Like, nobody has that. They have a nice park in Wyandotte, but it sure isn't Elizabeth Park. That's a goldmine to bring people down if we could get events there. And we did a downtown, or we did a food tasting there, I don't know, about four years ago, five years ago. They sold out. It was a packed event. You know, it was good for all the businesses. People came from all different communities down here, and it helps out, so. That's all. My time's up. I just want to say I love Trenton and I'm proud to be here. I just think we need some help. And we are, you know, I'm a cook, so I don't know a lot about it, but I just need help and support from the community, and we need those downtown road closures. They're very important.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. If you ever want me to come for a ribbon cutting, just give us a call. I got you. All right. Anyone else here?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Howard Hamis. I live at 2921 Maxwell. I'm here tonight to announce that the Boy Scouts of America, along with the Mahican District and Michigan Crossroads Council and the Boy Scouts of America, this weekend, we passed out our bags, our white shopping-sized bags for the annual 2025 scouting for food. This scouting for food drive is just not a Trenton drive. It is also throughout the tri-county area and is now, I'm proud to say, throughout the whole lower state of Michigan. And within time, it's going to move to the U.P. That's where our council covers. This weekend, Saturday, Sunday, today and tomorrow, we have four Boy Scout units here in the city of Trenton that have been out passing these bags, passing these bags door to door. We will try to cover as much of the city as we possibly can. If a homeowner does receive a bag, we ask that the homeowner fill these bags with non-perishable food, canned food, boxed food, and food in plastic containers. Please do not fill it with food that's in glass jars. It's not safe and it's, and it can be dangerous at the break. We ask the homeowner to fill the bag, and please have the bag out on your doorstep this coming Saturday, November 8th, by 9:00 a.m. The Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, and Adventure Crews will be out by 9:30 Saturday morning, November 8th, to pick the bags of food up. All bags of food that's collected will go to the St. Philip's Lutheran Church Food Pantry, which is located at 1790 Ford Street here in the great city of Trenton. All the food that we collect will stay in the city of Trenton to help out residents that are in need. We will see to it, and we see to it, that no resident goes without food. I have been the chairman of this food drive since 2012. I've been in scouting since 1967 as a Cub Scout. And with what the city council here has talked about here, this is crucial. This is a sad time right now in our country. And we hope that the Boy Scouts of America can help our community with this food drive. We will do our very, very best. Regardless, rain, snow, sleet, or shine, we'll be out there. So we ask for the community's support in this drive. And I will be here at your November 24th meeting to give a final report on how we did. I have some statistics here, records. Last year, we collected 506 bags of food. 506 bags of food like this in the city of Trenton last year in 2024. And we hope with the problems we're having this year, that we can beat that mark and do it double or triple, whatever. We'll do what we can. I know we will also have people who aren't involved in scouting from the Trenton schools. I know in the past Chad Clements has had the National Honor Society there to help out this drive. I know Superintendent Doug Menzer has been there with his family and people from the schools to help out. And I know Coy and Paula, who run that food pantry, it is open every Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00. They do an outstanding job, so they can use the help they can, in any way they can. So I thank you very much for your time this evening. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council, for allowing the Boy Scouts of America here in the city of Trenton to solicit this project. We're very happy and honored. We have been, just the scouting for food has been and exists in the tri-county area and here in Trenton since the mid-'90s. And like I said, this is a sad time right now and this is crucial, so we hope that we can, we'll do our best to work with it. Thank you so very much, and we all have a very happy, safe, and healthy evening.
We appreciate you very much, Howard. So thank you a ton. Appreciate it. Hey, Tom?
Hey, how you doing? Hi, Tom Kenny, 1510 Yellow Brick Road. I'm here tonight. I got a project I'd like to tell you about and then a couple of shout-outs and a couple of thank yous. I'll try to keep it to the five minutes. Here on behalf of my daughter, Peyton, she decided she wanted to do a project for NHS. And how it came about was she was doing some ancestry stuff, you know, with the family trees. And she went to, her and her friend went to the Bloondale Cemetery. And she happened to notice that a lot of the veteran headstones were in pretty bad shape. So her NHS project is, she wants to get a group of kids to go over there, clean the place, clean all the headstones up pretty good and, you know, clean it all up. And so that's her project this Saturday. So I was, I'm going to work with, or try to work with Mr. Sergeant to try to get a couple, I like to get the water. It's a water thing. It's going to be a big project for that. And then a couple of waste cans, maybe a couple yard waste cans for the digging around the headstones and everything. I'm getting old and I don't think I can take my two from home, and I don't know if I'd be able to lift them up in my trucks, so. I kind of want to try to, try to get that over there. And then, so that's her project, it'll be an ongoing project. I know she, she secured, she kind of recruited me a little bit. I talked to Miss Davis in there. She's going to supply some donuts and some drinks for the kids. American Legion's going to supply some flags. I know she's looking for, still looking for some monetary donations, because, you know, she wants to buy the supplies. She wants it to be an annual thing, so whether it be around Veterans Day or Memorial Day to go over there. There's a lot of World War I, some Spanish-American. It's quite, I was over there the other day, so. It is, it is, there's about 110, I think, buried in there, so that is the project at hand. So that is the project at hand. Uh, I want to say, uh, she came home the other day and said in her fourth hour, Mayor Zepper was in her fourth hour. I want to thank you for coming to the school. I hope it changed a little bit from the time you, when you graduated, so where it is now.
Look at college campus these days.
It's, it's looking good. It is gonna be my final year there, so I, I will be done, that, uh, but I, I'm hoping to work on some projects to, uh, so when you come back, you can say, "Oh, wow, it's changed a little bit, too." And then, uh, lastly, I want to say congratulations Trenton Trojan Football Team. Uh, the, the Lady Volleyball Trenton Trojans will be playing their districts, I think it's Friday, so if you can come out and see them. I want to say good luck to, uh, our council there on your upcoming election. Been a part of a lot of those local elections over the years, and, uh, I know how, uh, grinding it can be. It sounds like you're gonna have good weather, so, uh, hopefully everybody comes out and votes. And, uh, my daughter will be back probably on the 24th with some before and after pictures. She's sorry she couldn't make it tonight. She, uh, had prior obligations, so I just wanted to come and, uh, let you guys know that would be the project that she'd be doing, and hopefully it makes a difference, so.
Yeah. We very much appreciate her doing that. Um, and if you want to give our office a call, too, um, Dean will get everything situated to make sure we've got supplies, and we should be able to take care of cleaning supplies and stuff like that for it, too, so we appreciate it. All right.
Hi. I think I'm gonna be the last one. Um, good evening, everyone. I'm Selena Peters. Um, before tomorrow's election, I just wanted to take a moment to sincerely thank all of those who have supported this campaign and believed in the vision for our community. To my friends and family, your time, your effort, and your encouragement have meant everything. Running for city council has been about listening, learning, and working together to make our city stronger. I am deeply grateful for every conversation, every piece of advice, and every show of kindness along the way. No matter what happens tomorrow, I'm proud of the positive People First Campaign we've put, built together. Thank you for, thank you all for standing with me and for continuing to care so deeply about the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Yeah. All right. Anyone else? Let's see, and any on Zoom? Entertain a motion of adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported for adjournment at 8:30 p.m. See you all in a couple of weeks.